Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of August 26, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Gandisberry.
Here.
Councilmember Peacock.
Here.
Councilmember Montoya.
Present.
Councilmember Grant.
Present.
Councilmember Hinkle.
Here.
Councilmember Boggit.
Here.
Councilmember Dixon.
Present.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
All right, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Council announcements, we'll start at Ward 1.
I don't have very many announcements other than hello, especially Ward 1. I did get the pleasure of going and joining the Kennedy PTA, even though I don't have a child, going there. They're really struggling to keep their PTA up and going. I encourage all citizens, even if you have a kid in school or not, please reach out to your local schools and maybe join their PTA as well. Very minimal cost for a great job that they do to help all of our children.
Ward 2?
No announcements for Ward 2.
Ward 3?
Thank you, Mayor Holman. Well, good evening, Ward 3 in Norman, Oklahoma. I hope this evening finds you well. I just have one announcement, and that's related to the Fall Residential Cleanup. If your Polycart service is on Monday, then your Fall Residential Cleanup will be October 4, and if it's on Tuesday, it'll be the following Saturday, October 11. That's all. And so for everyone here and watching online, thank you for being here.
All right, Ward 4?
Yes. Good evening, Ward 4 in City of Norman. First, I would like to thank Jessica Schwager for stepping up to serve on the Human Rights Commission. Next, I have just a few community events I want to highlight. At Midway Deli, Friday, August 29, there will be another summit featuring Caleb McGee at 6:30. McGee uses his power, powerful voice and gift of song to lift up important causes into open hearts. The nonprofit being uplifted this month is Thunderbird Clubhouse. Thunderbird's mission statement is, "Our mission is creating a new future for adults recovering from mental illness through the positive power of meaningful work, community, choice, and hope." Our vision is that all people with mental illness experience a community of recovery. And I'll just say, before I was on council, Resonator actually did an art auction and show one of the Second Fridays for Thunderbird, and there's an artist that came out who had used those services, who is doing really well in her art practice, Ashley Showalter, if anybody's familiar with her. So can't speak highly enough of the work that Thunderbird does. This highlight is for printmakers, muralists, and musicians, artists, vendors, and community sponsors. We have the Ink the Block Party on Saturday, September 20. Ink the Block Party brings music, art, and steamroller printmaking to downtown Norman's Walker Arts District. It will be located in the alley stage behind Opus, the garage, Oscillator Press. Applications for woodblock artists, muralists, vendors, and community sponsors can be found at oscillator-art.com. Last, I would like to thank the Norman Transcript for picking up the Downtown Norman and Campus Area Public Resources List, which covers day and night shelters, transportation, food pantries, and public bathrooms in core Norman. I'd also like to thank our Norman community, who help provide feedback about what services are available when and how to get into those shelters with a greater chance of success. You can find the document at bit.ly/40pf0jk. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Ward 6?
Good evening, Norman. I want to first thank Holly Pepler from Ward 6 for agreeing to serve on the Bicycle Advisory Committee. There are a lot of really great ideas for multimodal transportation and just bicycle routes in Norman, so I'm glad to have a Ward 6 representative on that committee. Also want to remind everybody about the Norman Arts Council Arts in Education Scholarship Exhibition. All of the kids who got scholarships from the Norman Arts Council to take different mediums of art are doing a show on display right now at Norman Arts Council at Main Site. It runs through September 12, so you can go check that out. It's really cool. Also, clear your calendars for Porch Fest, which is Saturday, September 13. It's one of Norman's really awesome free events happening in the Miller Historic District. And then I'm pretty sure there's a little football game happening this weekend, so there might be some interest in that. Everybody have fun and be safe, and Boomer Sooner.
Thank you. Ward 7?
Hello, Norman, and hello, Ward 7. First, I wanted to start off by thanking Councilmember Grant for that resource list that she made. I was so impressed with that, so thank you for that. Second, I wanted to thank Ward 7 resident Kayla Molina for stepping up and representing Ward 7 on the Historic District Commission. So thank you, Kayla. I appreciate that very much. And also want to say Boomer Sooner.
Thank you. Ward 8?
Thank you, sir. One announcement, I'd previously scheduled a town hall for tomorrow at the YFAC at 6:30. I think I've put it back out there on the Ward page and some other places. I need to reschedule that to this Thursday at 6:30 at the Tournament Room at the YFAC. My son's ninth grade football scrimmage got rescheduled to tomorrow, so I'm going to make that instead of the town hall, so we can do the town hall Thursday. And that is it for Ward 8.
Just a couple things, just recognizing all of our students in Norman and K-12, college, whatever it may be, starting school last week and this week, and just reminding all of our Norman residents to be aware of that. And there's going to be some traffic delays around schools. There's going to be college kids who have never driven in Norman, who might be from really small towns and might not be used, might not have any experience at all driving and getting around in a city like Norman, so I would just encourage everybody to have some patience and grace and take your time and plan ahead. And also encourage everybody to get out this weekend and enjoy the first game day on Campus Corner and downtown and everywhere else. It's one of my favorite times of year. The weather is right and, you know, the game day atmosphere, and I think there's a lot of excitement everybody has for this season. I also want to mention that this past Friday, we had the grand opening ribbon cutting for the new stadium at Norman North, which was approved by voters two years ago as part of the last public school bond issue. And I would just encourage everybody, if you get a chance, to go check it out. It's really amazing. The work that was done is really wonderful, and it's exciting that next Friday night, they're going to play the Crosstown Clash for the first time ever at Norman North High School. And so they now have their own stadium with their own colors and the Timberwolves, and that they can have all their own school stuff. They don't have to share with Norman High anymore. So that's really exciting, and would encourage everybody to check that out and see how your tax dollars were spent. And then also wanted to just recognize some of the other things that have, just in the last week, we had a big announcement from Bell Helicopters at the airport, that their new training flight school was going to be located in Norman, the way I understand it there. And we're seeing a lot of growth with Semper Fly helicopters that located there, expanded at the airport last year. There's a new control tower that's under construction at the airport right now. There are new hangars. There's plans for the runway to be extended and other things like that, so a lot of exciting stuff. We had the opening for Main Event last week in the University North Park area. Love Works Ribbon Cutting last night on Gray Street in their new building, which at one time served as a temporary Norman City Hall back in the 1970s, before everything located here to this complex. And so that was kind of an interesting piece of history. And then last week, we had the ribbon cutting for the new Stevenson Cancer Center at Norman Regional Health Plex. That was a big partnership between multiple different organizations, built by Manhattan Construction. It was a very impressive facility, and it was exciting to see that opening. And so there's just a really, a lot, that's just a little sample there, but there's a lot going on in Norman. When people ask me what it's been like being mayor for almost two months, there's just so many different events to go to. There's new businesses. There's projects that are finishing, and it's really exciting time, I think, to be in Norman. And also, I just want to encourage everybody to follow the City of Norman updates. If you're wondering about construction projects, street construction projects that might be taking a little while to complete. And I just remind everybody how the weather is in Oklahoma. We're experiencing it right now, raining every day. We've had a lot of rain this summer. We have severe weather throughout the year, and all those things can cause delays in these big construction projects, which can be very inconvenient, but they are worth it when those projects are finished and we're able to maintain our infrastructure. So, and then the last thing I want to mention is this Thursday at 4:00 PM here at City Hall, we have the Community Planning and Transportation Committee meeting, where we get the monthly update on the public transit ridership report, update on any public transit projects that are ongoing. We get updates from city staff on road construction projects, anything like that. And so if that's of interest to you, I encourage you to, you're welcome to attend the meeting in person here at City Hall. It's also livestreamed on the City of Norman YouTube, and you can go back and watch the replay at your convenience. So feel free to reach out to any of us, your council member or me, if you have any questions or comments about that. And so that's all I have for this week, and with that, we will move on to the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. Staff recommends that Item 1 through, through Item 21 be placed on the Consent Docket. I'll entertain a motion to place Items 1 through 21 on the Consent Docket.
Motion.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to place Items 1 through 21 on the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast. Items 1 through 21 on the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
And at this time, I will recognize David Grizzle, Emergency Management Coordinator, to the podium to make a few comments.
Thank you, Mayor.
Fire, Norman Fire Chief.
If you don't mind, I'll start us off tonight. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Travis King, Fire Chief. Thank you for taking time tonight to recognize the volunteer program that is housed in our Emergency Management Division. As you know, or may not know, several decades ago, the Emergency Management Division was moved from the Police Department to the Fire Department. And one of the things that really married up well was the volunteer aspect of emergency management. Back in 1894, when the Fire Department was created, we were all volunteers. So there's a volunteerism spirit that still exists in the Fire Department, and we really appreciate all of David's volunteers and what they do for us and for the community. From the many events that we have in our community, to disasters, to large wildfires, these folks are there giving refreshment to us and to the community. He has a, and I'll let him speak to this in greater detail in a minute, but just the many resources from running our EOC, helping run that, it's just really phenomenal. We really appreciate them. So for 20 years of service, we thank you. And David, would you like to add some comments?
Council, Mayor, thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me. Just like to point out that we've been in existence on the volunteer program. We did the preliminary administrative stuff in 2004 and formalized with this council in 2005. Since then, we've been highly involved in many community events and many disasters. In 2012, we, under the Medical Reserve Corps, the National Association of City County Health Officials, there was a glitch in their computer system that had lost all of our data. They wrote me a letter and said, "We're going to end your program. You haven't done nothing." I said, "Oh, really?" So after some discussion, they found my data. They sent me some statistics back, and I took, did a little math, and I wrote them back, and I said, "So what you're telling me is from the data that you provided back to me, that we documented in what we do here, you're telling me that we have averaged 4.3 events per year for the last 10 years under the Medical Reserve Corps program?" So we do some stuff, and we do it all in the background. We're not the ones out front, and we're right behind the ones that are out front. And as the chief mentioned, we do a lot of taking care of rehab. We do a lot of taking care of single-family fires. People need help communicating with the Red Cross, getting their immediate needs done, and we help take care of all of that. And in community events, you'll see us. The mayor's been out there several times at some of our events, and I appreciate any appearance by a councilperson, so you can talk with our volunteers, and they can interact with you. This weekend, we'll be at the OU game, providing a cooling tent, although I don't think we're going to need cooling this weekend. But if it's needed, we'll be there. We'll be at Norman Night Out, so come and see us. Just to mention some of the groups that we have, of course, we have the Norman Emergency Response Volunteer Team. That's held under the CERT, Citizens Emergency Response Training Program. And then we have the Oklahoma Medical Reserve Corps. That's ran through the State Department of Health, and it's always been housed here in Cleveland County and the City of Norman, which we've administered and been a proud part of that for a long time. And then we have South Canadian Amateur Radio Society. Those are the guys that are ham radios. They help tremendously in the area of storm spotting, technical things with our radio systems. We have complete radio systems that are subset of the public safety system that can easily be called into play during any time that that system falls down. We have some specialty groups called the Laletche League. Laletche League promotes women's health, breastfeeding, and other natural ways to care for children. We have Envision Success for Veterans. They help us take care of veterans groups during disaster operations and help with their immediate needs. Newly formed is the Oklahoma Small Animal Response Team, which is another Medical Reserve Corps unit that we're a part of. That is a statewide asset, and for those of you that were here during 2012 during that wildfire, you know, we had a big problem, not only with small animals and household pets, but large animals and horses took over the entire Cleveland County fairgrounds and held all the veterans and those emergency response folks in there. So we're involved in all that. I got reminded from my counterpart, City of Moore, today that just be sure you mention about Norman Civil Defense, because I volunteered for that. That's Galen Kitsch, if you know him. There's a couple of comments, and then I'll be quiet. Community members are an unrated source. Equipping people with knowledge and tools to become self-sufficient and a capable asset is a low-cost means of enhancing overall community well-being. Community partners are an underrated source. That's the Red Cross, the Salvation Army, the Crosspoint Church, all those people that collaborate with us. Leveraging the supports and services of a community partner while expanding their access to information and tools enhance the potential for meeting the needs of especially vulnerable lifeless. Community response volunteers are boots on the ground, and they're the people who make things happen. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate your time.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Docket.
Motion.
Second.
Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the Consent Docket? Seeing none. The motion to approve the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
All right. Item number 22, an ordinance rezoning property located on the southwest corner of Stony Brook Drive and North Interstate Drive from C1 Local Commercial District to SPUD, simple planned unit development. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion.
Second.
Is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation?
Good evening. Caitlin Turner, 525 Northwest 11th Street, here on behalf of the applicant. The SPUD before you allows for an off-premise sign along I-35. There have been numerous rezoning applications that have come forth on this property specifically, and I know that the neighbors to the west have been active and organized in addressing some of those. Those have since gone away, so we really wanted to keep them in mind whenever proceeding with this SPOD. So you'll see that it's limited to just that .1 acre on the far east of the site, just right next to I-35. And we also have it restricted to just that sign use, as to not cause any issue or concern with those neighbors and just mitigate the issues that they've dealt with in the past. We have a unanimous recommendation of approval from Planning Commission, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Thank you. Are there any council questions regarding this item? Okay. All right, seeing none. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Remarks should be directed to council only. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered for this item?
We have one. Stephen Ellis.
Steve Ellis, Ward 4. I've made a few comments about this before, but it tends to get lost. Since it's a new council, I figured I'd try again. Have a look at the ordinance that's supposed to authorize SPUDs, and it's actually in the report from the staff. The general idea behind a SPUD is it's supposed to be a kind of deal where the city gives some leniency to an applicant in return for something that's supposed to be special. It's supposed to be something that's, a development that benefits the overall community in a certain kind of way. And I think in general, SPUD applications have not been sort of living up to that deal aspect, and I think this is a really, really good case of that. So this SPUD is basically, "Don't make us obey the sign rules." It's a request to get by with something that they wouldn't otherwise get by with because of the sign rules. Now, I actually don't have anything to say about the substance of this, or the sign rules, right? Is it something that really would bug the community to the west of that place? So I really don't want to comment on that, but I do want to comment on the sort of general practice, and I'll probably say something about it for the next SPUD as well, of SPUDs being suggested to applicants or applicants asking for SPUDs when they're not really doing what the SPUD rules say, essentially, which is, you know, cutting a deal for something special. And again, I don't have any dog in the hunt for the particular rules here. I don't know whether or not this sign is going to be troublesome or not, but I think the thing that generates distrust in a city environment is when it looks like certain groups of people are getting consideration that other groups of people don't get, right? It really does seem like, first of all, applicants aren't trying to do what SPUD says that they should be doing, and then, secondly, the City Council is basically giving people an opportunity to come argue why they shouldn't be, you know, held to the letter of the law. Now, I think there are lots of cases in Norman where the application of the letter of law is inappropriate. So again, I'm not saying always enforce the law as strictly as possible, but the idea that it's easy for some people to get around both the letter and the spirit of the law, and very, very difficult for other people to get around the letter and the spirit of the law, creates just a difficult atmosphere for thinking about Norman politics. So should this sign be there? No idea. Is asking for the SPUD in this particular kind of way appropriate? Doesn't seem to be following the SPUD rules. I mean, that has been the way that you're operating, so I don't know what that means, but I do think we should be really, really careful about the way we do SPUDs, and I'm recommending that to the new, newly-elected council. So thanks, Steve Ellis, again.
Thank you. Is there, is there a final comment from anybody in the audience on this item? And are there any final comments from council on this? Councilmember Grant?
Yes. I just wanted to address the issue of the SPUD and if, she already knows. So I don't think that that was really...
Like case-by-case basis?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then I'll let you answer the rest.
Okay. So, excuse me. Going with the SPUD allowed them to reduce the area that they're going to account for the sign there as opposed to just doing a straight rezoning for C2? Sorry, I'm just a little out of breath. So that would be why they went with the SPUD? And then what was the first question?
I was just curious about the AIM Norman Comprehensive Plan stuff. So we knocked that out of the way. But, you know, I'm favorable to this because it, the reduced list of allowable uses is in consideration of the abutting R1 single-family dwelling district and other properties. So that seems to lessen the impact instead of going to C2.
Right. And as we talked about with the applicant when they came forward, this area is not platted and they're not required to plat to get the permit for the sign. So had they gone with the straight zoning, they would have needed to plat the property. And so this was another way for them to be able to bring this forward and just put it on that small area as opposed to the entire tract.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further comments from council on this item? Okay. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading, section by section. Council members, you may cast your vote.
My vote, motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading as a whole.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading as a whole. Council members, you may cast your votes.
My vote, adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Okay. Item number 23. An ordinance rezoning property located at 2880 and 2886 Classon Boulevard from C2 General Commercial District to a SPUD, simple planned unit development. Entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section. Council members, you may cast your vote.
My vote, motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading as a whole.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading as a whole. Council members, you may cast your votes.
My vote, adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Okay. Item number 23. An ordinance rezoning property located at 2880 and 2886 Classon Boulevard from C2 General Commercial District to a SPUD, simple planned unit development. Entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion?
Second.
And is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation?
Aaron. Thank you, Sean Rieger, representing the applicant in this case. And we'll move right on into it. Appreciate you guys very much tonight. So that was the last item. Let me, give me a couple of minutes here to zoom through this last item. Here we go. Okay. So we're on South Classon tonight, just north of Highway 9. And there was a new Onqiu, new Whataburger. And so we're just north of the Whataburger there. You kind of see, it's hard to see on the screen, but subject property just right north of the Whataburger on the west side of Classon Boulevard and just against the, between Classon and the railroad tracks there on South Classon. So we'll take you in. The existing zoning is C2, commercial, open district C2. And the red areas around it are all C2, basically. The brown area to the west is multifamily, and the railroad separates this right there. And so the rezoning night will take you to a SPUD that will have mixed uses of residential on the backside of this property and commercial on the front side. So if you think about it, the commercial is already zoned for commercial. So the commercial aspects of this zoning tonight are basically the same. That is already allowed. And the back end of the site, which will be multifamily, is essentially what we're here for, for the permission to have the rezoning to do on that property. It is about 2.75 acres. Here's a closer look at it. The existing use is basically a car mechanic or a service user as well. I believe plumbing, heat and air, something of that nature. And you can see a large lot in the back that is sort of their equipment yard, really effectively impervious areas. It's hard-packed gravel in the back. And you can see Classon Boulevard again in the front, the railroad tracks behind. Across the street is automobile user, and south there is the Whataburger. About 2.75 acres. There are already sidewalks in the front. Mayor Holman and I were talking about that the other day, that that got done before we got here to do this site. So a benefit that it's already in place. We will, of course, be connecting to those sidewalks. This is your GIS, and I will always put a plug out for your GIS. You have a fantastic GIS system. Your mapping system is one of the best. We're on it almost every day using these maps, and it's really well-done. So kudos to your staff and for having this in place. This is your GIS. I always like to show this to you just so you can kind of see the mechanics of the property. And this one has no floodplain on it, no WQbz zone, no blue line streams, nothing of that nature. You can see it is a little bit of an oddity in that half of it is already platted. The Monroe addition is sort of the north half. You see a line running kind of through it in the middle from left to right. That's the separation point. So the north half of this is already platted. We wouldn't need to be here if it was already platted. But the south half of it is not platted. So we are here to plat the whole thing into one lot because half of it is not platted. So pretty much an older site that sometimes you run across that where a user is sort of spanning over half-platted, half-unplatted, and that's the case tonight. So we're going to go in and plat the whole thing. It is infill. There's already utilities all the way around it. And so we're really not having to do much as far as utility improvements go. This is the site plan. The north, I'm sorry, the right half of it is the commercial plan. So two commercial buildings, all small unit users. These would be roughly about 1,300 square foot users, 10 of them in two different buildings. And right down the middle of the site, you can see coming in from Classon is a private drive that takes you to the back of the site where there are 18 residential units in the back. And this is kind of a separation point. There's a, on the back of the site, of course, there will be parking for these residential units. And on the front of the site, the parking is primarily for the commercial units in the front. Sort of a large colonnade shown across the front of this commercial user so that we'd have awnings and things of that nature. About 13,000 square feet of commercial, 18 residential units. Staff report highlighted that the project is consistent with the locational criteria for local commercial corridor land use policies, which encourage basically this exact sign, same kind of arrangement, which encourage the placement of residential uses behind higher intensity or commercial uses. We have about 33% pervious area, or in other words, about 67% impervious. That is close to R1 standards as far as impervious, impervious goes. So we are really very much a green site when you consider it being commercial and multifamily. And this is the preliminary plat, one lot. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat. No issues were identified in the plating of the property. And there's the site plan in context. You can see now with the multifamily in the back, the two commercial buildings in the front, the parking lot in the front, and then Classon Boulevard. And in summary, we'll move quickly through it. The proposal aligns with the vision of the AIM Norman Comprehensive Plan by encouraging a mix of uses where applicable. That's the staff report comment. It's consistent with AIM Norman. It had no neighbors came to pre-development meeting. It was just us sitting there by ourselves. Nobody came to Planning Commission. Nobody commented at Planning Commission either. No protests filed before or tonight, and it was unanimous approval at Planning Commission when we showed up there. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have and hopefully keep you to a short night tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any council questions regarding this item? Councilmember Peacock?
I see that you've got detention in this lower southwest corner. Is that tied into a public sewer or does that just discharge into? It almost looks like there's a swale running behind all those properties back there. And I didn't know if that was piped into something or if it was...
I'm looking at my engineer. Is that piped into stormwater or are we just draining into the...
No, it's piped to the stormwater.
To the stormwater. We are piped.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is the detention basin on the lower part of this drawing, both parking lots and the impervious drain to it. And then as usual, we will release at no faster rate than the historic flow.
Thank you.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes. I really liked the mixed-use residential. And I was just curious, so it looks like home occupations will be allowed. Can you explain a little bit what the intent is?
Yeah. So this is something that we have used SPUDs for. The audience member suggested we don't ever do anything unique in a SPUD. We do, actually, and this is an example of it in that the use allowances on this property, what we're starting to put in for multifamily or residential users is the ability to have kind of an enhanced business model, very slightly enhanced in that right now, the current R1 standard or residential standards, that you really can't mix. If we just did open district zoning, straight zoning, you really can't mix any kind of a business into residential environment. You could have a home office, that's about it. You couldn't have customer parking with it. You couldn't have signage with it. This one just very slightly upticks that and allows you to have a little bit of a better sign out front, on front of the dwelling. It allows you to have, I believe it's one customer, a minor customer interface with it. And so it's just a little bit of an uptick in the allowance of having your own business in your dwelling unit.
Yes. I noticed there was one onsite worker and patronage would have to be appointment only.
That's right.
And I looked over the list of uses and they seem pretty compatible with having housing onsite, too. So...
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thanks.
Okay. So I did have a couple of questions, too. The parking, so this is in accordance with our non-minimum requirement. So...
Correct.
The developer is proposing as much parking as they think they need, correct?
Correct, Mayor. And I actually asked the engineers that after we spoke last week. And we think we are slightly below the recommended levels. As you recall previously, much to council members' credit, we took away the minimums of required parking. We think we're relatively close to the recommended amount on residential. We think we're actually under on the commercial. It's a little bit hard to plan when you have speculative centers like this as to what your commercial amount's going to be. Because it could be multiple restaurants, which take more parking. It could be a senior professional office that takes very little parking. So a little bit hard for us to speculate as to how much parking is needed in uses like this. But we are basically just slightly below the recommended amounts across the site.
Okay. And then we talked about, when we met about this project, the space in between the two commercial buildings, the driveway in between them.
Right.
And trying to make sure that, from a shopper and pedestrian standpoint, that people could walk in between those two commercial buildings and that there was connection there and then potentially even a raised crosswalk in between there.
Yeah.
Would help slow people down as they're driving through there, but kind of give the pedestrians, they know where they're supposed to walk to.
Yeah.
If you might talk about that maybe a little...
Yeah, I appreciate that comment. And I don't have a pointer on here, but what Mayor is talking about is between those two rectangular commercial pieces. And we did talk to engineering, and we are planning where the two sidewalks go to put in a very highly visible crosswalk, striped areas on both of those locations. We think that will probably suffice. It is a relatively narrow location to go through there, so we think that will help as well. But very much appreciate those comments, and we will put in striping to accommodate that.
As much connectivity as possible.
Yes.
And then we talked about trees, just really the ones along that north property line.
Right.
Any of them can be preserved and can keep that buffer between this and the property to the north. You know, and just in general, any tree preservation's usually good, so...
Appreciate that, too, Mayor. We did, went back and looked at that. I know at least one of those trees is a Bradford pear. We really don't want to keep that. And we think one of those trees...
Yeah, get rid of that one.
Maybe a cottonwood. We don't really want to keep that either. So there are a couple of trees there we don't want to keep.
Okay.
And the rest are mostly right along the line where we think we can pretty well preserve right on the property line there, so...
Okay. And then there are two existing driveways on this property. So those are being eliminated and consolidated into one single driveway. Is that what...
That's correct, Mayor. And if you look across the street, there is a curb cut directly across the street. We are basically going to put our curb cut right in the middle, which will basically line up across the street. I think the staff report mentions that the curb cut is put in the best place it can be put on a site that is relatively narrow here. You know, you have curb cuts sort of all over the area. And so you get into lining and spacing areas that are difficult. We appreciate the staff report that said we did about as best as we can possibly do on this site to put it right in the middle.
Okay. And then my last one is just the, if someone's walking on that sidewalk on Classon right there and they live back here or they want to walk to one of those businesses, how do they get from that sidewalk to the commercial buildings?
Yeah, we haven't...
They just walk through the driveway or...
We haven't really shown it yet, but there would be a sidewalk...
Okay.
Coming from the sidewalk back into the commercial.
Connecting up to the...
Correct.
Perfect. Okay. Just want to clarify that was the...
Yeah.
Okay. Those are the questions I had. And let's see. All right. This is an opportunity for members... Thank you, Sean. The public to make comments regarding this item. Remarks should be directed to council only. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered for this item?
Stephen Ellis.
Hi again. Steve Ellis, Ward 4. I don't get a chance to congratulate Counselor Rieger very much, but I was really happy that he sort of spelled out what's special about this and why you can't do a regular zoning sort of thing. So kudos. I do want to say that I think that's consistent with the suggestion that I made before, which is that as a council, you get to decide if you're getting enough out of the development to give people a pass on sort of regular zoning issues. But I do think that that should be the deal, and that's how you should think about SPUDs. And the concern that somebody is going to ask for something even worse than the SPUD doesn't really count as part of that deal because you can always say no to stuff like that. So, you know, I think you need to compare what the zoning is right now and what they can do by right with what is going on with the new proposal. And if they've got something that looks good, it's fine. But that should be the public face of sort of like all of these SPUD discussions. And, you know, I've been around for a while, as have some of the council members, and you know, it's not always the case, right? That advocacy for a SPUD is oftentimes, yeah, we don't like this, so we let us out of it. And that's probably not a good way to develop trust in the zoning process. So I signed up for both of these because I thought one of them was pretty clearly a good idea, and the other one maybe wasn't. So, you know, this one, yay team. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any final comments from the public on this item? And council on this item? Seeing none. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading, section by section. Council members, you may cast your vote.
My vote, motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading as a whole.
Motion?
Second.
Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading as a whole. Council members, you may cast your votes.
My votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Okay. Item number 24. A preliminary plat for 2880 Classon Boulevard addition, a simple planned unit development. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
Motion to approve?
Second.
This is a companion item to the previous item. Are there any council questions regarding this item? Seeing none. Are there any further public, are there any further public, are there any further comments from the public regarding this item? Okay. Are there any final comments from council on this item? Okay. The motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Council members, you may cast your vote.
My votes have been cast and the motion to approve the preliminary plat passes unanimously.
All right. Ms. Lane... Miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in the discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to the council and limited to four minutes or less. Do we have anybody signed up for?
Yes, Mayor, we'll start with Ben Plummer.
Okay.
Probably the first and only time that will ever happen. He objects that only rich people are allowed to bend the rules and have access to these S-P-U-Ds. And I agree and also think that poor people should be allowed to bend those rules and do SPUDs with their own property. There are currently requirements that you have to have a minimum amount of square footage before you can do a planned unit development, and I don't think that's fair. But the reason I came here is because I like to complain about the fact that the Norman Police Department is still sending people who go to OU for the games down Flood Street. So, they have these recommended routes that people are supposed to take when they go to game days, and people go down Flood, and then they come back, and Flood at Robinson and Flood, it backs up all the way to Acres. And I know people have to leave, but those cars are sometimes sitting within 10 feet of people's windows. Like, they've got, you know, between, about Johnson and Flood, and also Robinson and Flood, in that stretch, you've got cars that are really close to people's houses, and they're just sitting there, running their pollution, and it's just wafting into people's yards. And then, of course, they make it very difficult to even get out of the neighborhood because they don't want to open up. And I'd just like it if the Norman PD would recommend that people take James Garner instead, because they don't even list it on their maps.
Next, we have Stephen Ellis.
Steve Ellis, Ward 4, again, still, I guess, let's try to think about that. I wanted to thank the council and including the city manager for sort of asking for a presentation on item 15 in the Norman Citizens Corps. When I read that earlier today, I was like, dang, I don't think I've ever heard of that organization before. And then, what I didn't realize is that it was the sort of umbrella organization for a bunch of things I had heard and some things that I hadn't. So, it's really good to know sort of how that structured, and I felt very edified today with Mr. Grizzle's presentation, so I don't, did he say? I was gonna, okay, there, thank you. Sorry, address the council. I wanted to thank him in particular because I feel like it was, the resolution was worded in such a way that if you knew, you knew, but if you didn't, you didn't necessarily. And I thought it was really nice to hear sort of like the good work that's being done there. So, thank y'all. Thank the Norman Citizens Corps and its component organizations. I guess I'll see the rest of my time. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there-
May, excuse me, Naomi Windler.
Hello, Naomi Windler, Ward 2. Okay, so, I just came back from my trip to Canada, and I was looking at their zoning maps. And I know this is very small, but there are lots of colors, lots and lots of colors. So, yellow is residential stuff, but like this, this is R1. Over here, that's R2. This little bit here is an R3. So, there's lots of variety in a very small space of residential compared to here. This is my neighborhood. It's all R1. Very boring. So, one thing I'm wondering is, so, my house is R1. What if I wanted to make that an R2? What if I wanted to tear down my house and then make a duplex? How difficult is that? You know, what is the process for that? Could more people do that? And then, to further expand on this, new housing developments. I think they should have a mix of, yeah, sure, have a section of single-family housing, but then have a section that's duplexes, and then have a section that is maybe fourplexes or sixplexes, like little small apartment kind of things. That would, there'd be a lot more variety, and it would be more interesting to walk through the neighborhoods. You'd get different kinds of people in the same neighborhood, and that would be kind of cool. I didn't really realize that this was like, you know, zoning meeting day, but this is what I was looking at to talk about today, so, kind of appropriate. I like this. It, you know, this proposal for, you know, commercial and then residential behind that, that's very cool. It'd be really cool if maybe there were like, yeah, restaurants, maybe a small grocery or something. That'd be kind of neat and convenient for the residents back there, that they could just walk to get groceries or, you know, food and essentials, that kind of thing. Let's see, the other thing I was wondering about. So, I'm on the Economic Development Advisory Board. We have not met in a really, really, really long time. What's up with that? That's it. Thanks.
A way that someone could rezone their R1 property to build a duplex, just FYI. That is one way. Anyway, is there any other comment from the public? Miscellaneous comment? Seeing none? All right. Any final comment from the council? Seeing none? Okay. Well, then, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.